Okay, I will call to order this meeting of the Urbana Committee of the Whole. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. There are none. Any additions to the agenda?
None.
Presentations and public input. Maybe before we get to this one, if we would motion to extend, I would accept a motion to extend our meeting.
I'll move that we extend the meeting to 11:00.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice to extend till 11:00, seconded by Chandra. Do we vote on that one?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no presentations. We'll do public input. Please state your name, and you have up to five minutes to address the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Hey, Gail.
Price increase, the water price increase. And so, thank you. And I support an organization, Citizens Utility Board, that works to fight rate hikes all across the state. And I don't know if the city has any capacity to point the public to that organization as a resource or to, you know, in fighting this rate hike, or just in general, when dealing with utilities. But that would be, I think, a great thing to do if that's something you can do. Thank you.
Thank you for input. Would anyone else like to address the Committee of the Whole? Okay, seeing... Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah, hi, my name is Josh. I just wish there had been just discussion from you guys just to have explained why in favor of yes. I don't know if there's time for a second round of input. I would just be curious to know the motivation, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Committee of the Whole tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to staff report on fourth quarter 2023 update on mayor council strategic goals.
In the interest of time, this is the final report for the mayor council strategic goals for 2022, 2023. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I have some final updates that are actually, would be the first quarter of 2024. If anybody has any questions, I'll share that. Otherwise, I think probably need to move on with the agenda. But if people have questions, I try and answer them.
Any questions for tonight? Yes, Mary Alice?
So I know that we just got the first part of the report from Barry Dunn, and I, it's a long thing. I remember seeing what time we're supposed to... If you could update us on the timing of the next tranche of reports from Barry Dunn?
That I don't, I don't have that in front of me. But I will, but I will just take the opportunity. People have said it in prior meetings, the Barry Dunn, the first phase of the Barry Dunn report, which is a staffing study, is out now. Michelle Wine-Settle from Barry Dunn will be here next Monday to make a presentation and answer questions. And we'll have the fuller timeline at that point.
Will she be making presentations to any other commissions like the CPRB or anybody else?
Not as of now, no. That's not scheduled.
Chandra?
I don't know if it's related, but I wondered when we'd be getting a update on ARPA fund projects, like how they're doing. I know RPC is doing that, but just wondered when we get to take a peek-see as what's happening with that.
Well, you know, as luck would have it, Will Kolchowski has joined us. Do you know when there's going to be an update about the, how the ARPA projects are tracking?
No, no, not at this time. But there's reports every quarter. So we can report some progress fairly soon. Just depends on how polished the report will be. But we have some data from quarterly reports now. But I don't have a-
That we can share?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely like to see something soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Jaya?
Yeah, jumping back to Barry Dunn, I know a lot of us are just starting to try to process everything that is there. Will there be another opportunity with Michelle or for some discussion? I don't think a week is going to, or a little over a week is going to be enough for people to really process all that's in there.
There may be. We'll have to get her to, if we want that, we'll have to get her to come back. And we put this on her calendar probably two months ago. So it would be, it would be a while, but we could, we could funnel questions back to her and get responses.
And maybe we can just encourage community members to reach out to their council members too if they have any questions, so we can make sure that those questions are passed along.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, new business. Our first item is ordinance number 2024-03-015 and ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map at 205 North High Cross Road, Plan Case Number 2483-M-23.
Yes, good evening, Committee of the Whole. So council is being asked to consider a rezoning for a parcel owned by OSF Healthcare at 205 North High Cross Road to rezone it from the B3 general business district to B1 neighborhood business. Previously in 2020, ordinance number 2020-04-023, council had approved a rezoning of this parcel from B1 to B3. But as you'll recall, in Resolution 2023-11-094R, council directed me as the zoning administrator to file an application to reconsider whether the B3 zoning district was appropriate for this parcel. So that's what this case is about tonight. Just really briefly, this is the location of the parcel, sort of in that hatched area. Surrounding land uses residential to the north and west, business to the south, some farmland and residential to the east. Current zoning, multifamily residential to the north and west, neighborhood business to the south, and this parcel's own general business. Future land use is identified as community business in the comprehensive plan. So for the recommendation, the plan commission recommended that council approve the rezoning. Staff had recommended that the plan commission carefully consider the rezoning criteria, because the proposed rezoning meets some of the criteria, but it does not meet others. So there are also many instances throughout the city where B3 zoning is directly adjacent to residential zones and uses. So staff recommends, or as in this case, so staff recommends that treating this property differently from other similar instances should be explained if the council wants to rezone the property. That concludes my report. I can take questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Questions? Mary Alice?
Thank you for going through this process and bringing us to this point right now. This is a little bit in parallel with what we're going to be talking about next, which is the council goals. One of the problems with this parcel was the fact that OSF wanted to be able to build that urgent facility, and there's no delineation between a doctor's office and a hospital, right? So there's no delineation between those two types of businesses. I'm going to call them.
Yeah, we call it a medical clinic, and that does require a special use permit.
What about a doctor's office or dentist's office? Does that, do you have to be in a B3?
It depends. Often, we consider those to be more like professional offices. So a dentist's office, if it's just a small private practice, we'd probably just consider that a professional office.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions or motion? James?
Just a quick question. I think the previous page that you had up there had that, those triangles, I guess, on either side of the road. I assume the comprehensive plan talks about if the stuff on the east side there was ever annexed, what we would likely zone it for?
Yes.
And what would, how would we zone that?
Well, so the issue is that the future land use designations in the comprehensive plan don't line up directly with the zoning districts. So we could zone it anything from, I'd say, B1 neighborhood business to B2, which is neighborhood business arterial, or B3. So I don't know what we would zone it at this time. We'd have to deal with that when the time came.
All right. So if I, I think I heard you correctly, you, the staff is recommending that we don't change this back to B1 unless we have a good reason to move it back to B1. Is that what I'm hearing?
That was not quite the recommendation. The recommendation was that you carefully consider the criteria before embarking on a rezoning.
I've carefully considered. I guess that would be moving on to discussion. So I won't, I won't go there until we're ready to discuss.
Any other questions or motion?
Do you want to motion?
Yep, if there's no further questions, I'll take a motion.
scrolling through 152 pages, so somebody else has to have the number.
Oh, here, I got a paper one.
I can make a motion recommending approval for ordinance number 2024-03-015, an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning map, 205 North High Cross Road, Plan Case Number 2483-M-23. The recommendation for approval.
I would second that if it's going to be on consent agenda.
I will put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a recommendation for approval on the consent agenda by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Yes, James?
As I was about to say, thank you. I've, since this came up, and I've, I've carefully considered it, I am not satisfied with the idea that when we change zoning to support particular development, and that doesn't happen, we shouldn't return the zoning to the place the way it was, particularly since the parcel that it was part of originally is also zoned B1. So I've thought about this, and I would like to support moving it back to B1. That doesn't mean I wouldn't consider a zoning change in the future if the right application came about. But I can tell you that if I'm sitting on this council, that will be, that will come with a development agreement, and the zoning change will come after the project is actually going forward.
Yes, Mary Alice?
So just so I understand, from the city's perspective, if it is part of a development agreement, that would move the project forward, but then retain the existing zoning if the project did not move forward? I just want to be clear.
Well, I'm, you're asking me to, I guess, explain what, what council member Quisenberry was just proposing. I, I mean, development agreements are not my bailiwick, so I don't think I could speak to those. I suppose you could have a development agreement that said we will rezone this once all these things are executed. I feel like Will Kolchowski has some experience with development agreements. Oh, sorry, I saw some movement over there. Sorry, I'll, I'll take that back. I stand by my answer. I saw movement.
I guess, I guess my point is, this is the second time that this has bitten us, right? And I feel like there should be a process at the city where we can allow people to change it with the specific idea and concept that they're going to be doing X on this parcel. Because the way our zoning works, there's only certain types of businesses and properties that can be used, or multifamily, et cetera. That, so I just don't know what the process is. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I didn't know that maybe James's process is not correct, but I don't know what the correct process is.
I'm not, I'm not envisioning a process. I'm just saying that I'd like us to move it back to B1, because that's what the adjacent property is, and that's what it was before someone said they would build an urgent care center there, and we changed it to facilitate that. Does that mean that I don't see anything else ever going there outside of those possibilities? No. It just means I want to be a lot more clear. The next time we talk about changing zoning in favor of a particular development, we, the city has some kind of protection that it's not a bait and switch. And I'm not saying OSF intended to do that. I know the world changed from the time they proposed to do this to the time they've decided not to do that. I just, I just, I'm just worried that, I think it should be B1. And if there's a reason for it to be other than B1 in the future, I want to ask a question about why we're changing it and how we protect ourselves from a similar incident.
Yes, Carol?
I think we can research this more. I'm not sure a development agreement would be the tool, but what you're talking about is conditional zone, conditional rezoning. And there could, I don't know, but perhaps we need to create a tool in the zoning ordinance that could be that tool. I don't know if that's possible, but we'll explore that with the city attorney and, and see. But I'm guessing that tool doesn't currently exist.
Great, thank you. Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair for just a minute?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I agree with y'all's points about figuring out, and thank you, Carol, for the process there on how we could explore that, so we're not leaving things kind of open when the original development doesn't come through. I appreciate, I appreciate you, Kevin, for filing this, going through all those steps and doing the research here. A few things I would just like to add to some of the points here about number four, the relative game to the public versus the hardship of the property owner. From what I'm reading, B1, you know, I think even intentionally somewhere in the definition says that it's more for the benefit of the neighboring residents and the communities of more day-to-day kinds of uses, like a grocery store, bakery kind of shop like that, rather than B3, that's kind of those things that aren't maybe as useful to the immediate neighbors, like long-term storage buildings. I also have some, some questions I'm wondering about in relation to number six, about land development in the vicinity, that just saying that it was also vacant as a B3 the past few years, not as long as it's been vacant as a B1, I'll give you that. But it's been sitting there vacant regardless, until from what I've been told, city staff was the ones who recommended this company from looking into the site for storage containers at this location. So I just, you know, couldn't we recommend other B1 businesses that might be more beneficial? I have concerns about storage buildings and how they add to the tax base with property taxes on temporary buildings that aren't taxed versus sales revenue and what other things could be there. So those are just extra things I'll add and stop. Thank you.
I'll relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Other discussion? Okay, I think we're ready for a, let's just do a roll call in case there's any differences.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin? Yes.
Ms. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Thank you. That ordinance passes. Next is Resolution Number 2024-02-013R, a resolution adopting mayor council strategic goals for 2024 through 2025.
Okay, good evening. If you'll remember, we had this briefly as an agenda item in February, where I kind of went over the history to this point, and where we ended was waiting for everybody to be present at the same time. Sorry. And where we ended at that meeting was just waiting for everyone to be present at the same time to discuss the goals. So I really don't have much to say, but I have the, some slides here with the goals, so that if there's particular changes to the words, I can hopefully try to do it as we go, so that we can finish the evening if we want with the updated language. So that's all I have.
Jaya?
Yeah, just looking at Strategy 1.3B, and I think we need to modify the wording. It says continue to fund community partners and provide the, or sorry, and projects that promote health, wellness, drug and alcohol treatment, and family suffering from domestic violence. Point of order. There is no motion on the floor, so this is a time for questions. We have to motion to do something to have discussion and amendments. Sorry.
I'll hold. We'll come back to it. Thank you.
I move Resolution Number 2024-02-013R, a resolution adopting mayor council strategic goals for 2024, 2025, onto City Council for approval on regular agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Chandra for regular agenda, seconded by Mary Alice.
And also, just as a point of procedure too, so long as there is a consensus, I don't feel that you need to like make individual amendments for each of the changes you're suggesting. So long as there is a consensus, it could be a friendly amendment, and those who made the original motion just say, yep, that's part of it when it comes time to vote. Does that make sense? Kind of clear as mud?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Jaya?
Can I make a friendly amendment, so it doesn't sound like we're promoting family suffering from domestic violence?
So could you remind us, yeah, which one?
Yes, it's 1.3. It was on it now. Promote community well-being. It's under B. We just need to modify the language, because we're talking about wanting to fund community partners and projects that promote health, wellness, drug and alcohol treatment, and support families suffering from domestic violence, or something along those lines. So we're not funding families. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Others? Yeah, Mary Alice?
So I, I'd like to propose as a friendly amendment, since that's what we're doing. And Strategy 1.2A, it says enhance and expand alternative emergency response models. I'd just like to say investigate and develop, because we don't technically have one right now. We kind of sort of have one. So that's Strategy 1.2A. Because right now it says enhance and expand. I'm just wondering if we can change it to investigate and develop, or develop and fund. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So for 21-
Strategy 1.2A-
12A, saying develop and fund.
Expand. So I'm just wondering if we should say develop and fund, or investigate and develop, something about begin the process is what I'm trying to figure out.
Develop and fund. Any thumbs ups, downs for those?
Or develop and implement?
Develop and implement, yeah, fine.
And I'm sorry, Sharice, I don't see your thumb here. You might have to jump in vocally.
Excuse me?
Sharice, are you okay with that change?
I'm here.
Are you okay with that change?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear exactly what she said.
I was just saying for a straw poll vote, I can't see your thumb, so just feel free to chime in if you agree or disagree with some of these changes here.
It, I guess, whatever you guys, I'm trying to see, watch everything on YouTube too, so I didn't really understand what the, what the change was going to be.
Sure, yeah, it's hard remotely. Would be Strategy 21A, change to develop and implement is the change, and then the regular language of alternative emergency response models.
Okay, I was, yeah, I was trying to find 21A while, while you guys are talking. I'm still trying to find it. This sounds good to me.
Others?
Trying to find the page that's on.
I have some.
Sorry, struggling a little, little bit with 1.3B a little bit, just wondering if there needs to be some sort of pause after domestic violence, because again, now we're not supporting them with continual program and monitoring and evaluation. It's going back to an earlier piece. So the, just trying to figure out if there's a way that we can make it a little bit clearer.
Okay. The fund and support community partners that promote health and wellness?
Yeah, it's just the tail end of that that's a little bit awkward. So just trying to figure out if there's a way to make it less awkward.
Okay, wait, this 3A. I'm looking for 3B.
Yeah, we've got up there-
Promote communication and outreach to the municipal neighborhood groups.
So we're not here all day. Yeah. That's what I was wondering, if we could just add a comma after domestic violence?
Oh.
Is that my call?
Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair again?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I wanted to add some here. We got an email, I think just today, from the Sustainability Advisory Commission from our discussion at our March 5 meeting. There's quite a few recommendations there. I think it's nothing really that major, just kind of moving some, adding one about a full-time equivalent position for an arbor technician and a vehicle, so that we can adequately do our tree maintenance and maintain curb canopy. This was, again, in an email there. I definitely agree with these and support the SAC recommendations in addition to 33C, create and implement a grant program for community environmental projects. Since that's already in the budget, it was having conversations with grants management until it got seemingly held up by this whole process. So I think that it would be important to say implement it, since we already agreed on the money, and staff is waiting for direction from council. So I say we give clear direction.
Can you-
Oh, no, take the chair back, unless you have a-
I was going to ask you a question.
Oh, okay. Is that okay? Yeah.
Considering that we've gotten over 2,000 emails, can you tell me who sent that email? Because I cannot find it.
Yes, yes. Yep, I know it's easy to lose some. This is Luke Westocker.
Okay, now I'll release the chair. You can have it back, Grace.
Thank you. I will take back the chair. I'm sorry, are you saying something over there procedurally? Oh. Then wondering if there are thoughts on the SAC recommendation, or if people are just now having a chance to look at it for the first time, which is totally understandable, if we want to continue that for a later time? Yes, James?
Yeah, I was just going to say the, the recommendation about the arbor technician and the vehicle, that it feels to me more like a budget question than a strategic goals question. I mean, I'm supportive of the suggestion, but I don't know if I would add that as a strategic goal item, action item.
Could, could I offer a comment on that?
Sure, go ahead, Carol.
The, if you think about it, I, if you think about the way to implement that, because typically, these are things that staff are going to work on, and, you know, and we make the quarterly report. The only way to implement that is through the budget. So there's nothing for us to do, except if you put it in the budget, then, then it gets done. So, and then we, of course, we would hire that person. But I, I think that if you think of it that way, there's not a whole lot for us to do, other than your budget decision. So if that helps clarify it.
Wouldn't this be the direction to staff to put that in the budget? Or when else would be that opportunity from council to direct staff in the budget?
Well, I mean-
Just when we see it in June?
It's the mayor's budget to put together and make a presentation. And then if you, in, having heard that, you know, from SAC that that's a priority, but there's a lot of other priorities too. So that may be one of the things the mayor wants to fund, and it may not be one of the things the mayor wants to fund. And then it's up to council to decide whether or not you want to swap something out, or, or support whatever the mayor has offered in that regard.
Yes, Chandra?
Looking at the, the Stormwater Utility Credits and Incentive Manual, is that something that's?
That's already in there.
Okay, okay, just changing, okay.
Yeah, some of those were just moved from 33 to 31, because we ran out of letters in the ABC structure, and one only had like two or something. So I think some were just rearranged for the sake of numbers. And what we consider an asset versus infrastructure can be kind of different definitions. Mary Alice?
So when I addressed the Strategy 3.3 that they have in their email, I actually don't agree with their suggestion, and this is why. I would rather see an option when we approve big facility changes, that we be granted the option to look at sustainable energy options in that decision. So rather than implement a sustainable improvements in city facility capital projects, et cetera, I, I don't know- sustainable energy infrastructure. Does that make sense? Am I making the deline, it's just kind of like how we treated the fire stations, like we're like, okay, if we want to spend half a million dollars, we can do geothermal, or it's a give and take, so. That's 3.3A.
3.3A. Yes, Diane?
Is this for new construction, or renovation, or did SAC specify?
I don't think it's specified here. Capital projects, yeah, so I think could be renovation or new construction. I personally think this is overly vague and not particularly helpful on this one, is my personal opinion. James?
I think, I think with Mary Alice's suggestion, I like the original language better, which is evaluate the practical and financial feasibility of sustainability improvements in, in capital projects.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to give you an example, geothermal is included in the fire station design, and the citywide storage facility has undergone a year's, about a year's worth of evaluation of the utility bills, and then that's going into the decision for the solar panels on the roof.
Just to put the fine point on that, because that was part of my update, is we, the council in the February Budget Amendment Number Six voted to, for $30,000 to go towards the implementation of that project, so.
Sometimes you have to evaluate for a while before you automatically include things into a project, so you know how to size things and what to put on it. So, so the two new facility projects that, one was completed and one's about to get underway, they both will include those improvements.
Okay, and we are getting close to 11 o'clock. I will take a little discussion, sugar, James?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, because it looks like the, the city council meeting that this is going to move forward to is fairly light in items. I was wondering if we would be comfortable with continuing the conversation of these kind of minor edits in full council, as opposed to trying to come back and work on it more on Thursday? Because if I'm not mistaken, we only have a couple of items on the agenda for the full council meeting in a week.
That's true.
That, that should give us a little more time to talk about. Worst-case scenario is if we don't think we're done, we boot it to the next, we bring it back to committee for one more week. Not saying I don't want to stay here till 11:30 with you all, but I don't.
Sure. I think that sounds reasonable to continue the discussion at council, which we obviously will anyway, since it's on the regular agenda, but knowing that we might have a more meaty discussion. And yeah, Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion? Is that okay?
We have a motion.
Oh, we have one.
Yep. Yep, I was trying to, I was trying to set us up for the vote here. Okay, so to move it on to council, knowing that we will have more discussion.
What was I going to say? Do we have no recommendation?
It was just on the regular agenda.
Just on the, with no recommendation?
I didn't catch the recommendation. I put in my notes, but.
Oh. Would you be, it doesn't matter?
Does it matter in any practical sense in any way?
Okay.
All right. So we have motion that was moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice, for approval on the regular agenda at City Council. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opinions?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Last item is council input and communications. In the five minutes we have remaining, anyone?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Jaya?
Yeah, we had a question as to why we passed the resolution. I think that's worth answering, calling for the end of the war in Gaza and a lasting peace. I can say for myself, at least, I felt like it captured the best we could, the diverse range of opinions that we were hearing, and I'm happy to continue that conversation with people if they want to reach out as well.
I was actually going to address the same thing. I spent quite a bit of time thinking about this. I mean, considering the amount of public input we've had over the past couple of months, all the conversations, the one I've had with different people, I really sat down two weeks ago and kind of wrote out what all of my thoughts that summarized that. And, and honestly, they really hadn't changed from that time period. So my statement two weeks ago still stands.
Right. Any other council input? Okay, then with no further business, before the Committee of the Whole, we are adjourned.
Good night.